Yeah, they had to work. I mean, yeah, we should see us together. We kind of have to. We get one another, you know. So we have to work together. I mean, we got to explore that. See how we go about this now. Well, first of all, can we give a big round of applause to Courtney Wachtel for playing that really awesome piece for us in the last 15 minutes? So first of all, thank you everyone so much for coming today. This is, I mean, I know it's a weekend, you know, and it's a perfect day to talk about the future of Santa Cruz. I mean, I think any day is, but it's nice out the sun's out. My name is Faz. A lot of you may know me. I am the campaign organizer for Justin Cummings' campaign for city council. And so I will be your MC tonight, or today, I guess, midday. First of all, I want to just give a quick shout out to people who really helped make this event possible. If I miss anybody, please let me know. I want to make sure that we give everybody the appreciation for putting this together. I wanted to thank, first of all, Sarah and her partner for hosting this beautiful space for this launch party. Thank you so much, Sarah. I wanted to say thank Courtney for playing that beautiful piece for us and helping us kind of plan out this event. I wanted to thank Costanza and Nora for helping with signups and volunteering. I'd like to thank my wonderful partner, Sarah, who's helped also set up. I also like to thank Trevor, Trevor, where are you, for helping us set up here today. Sandy and Chris, of course, and Shanty Shack for donating the two kegs for us. Really appreciate Shanty Shack. If you don't know where they are, they're by Costco. You can go on Hensonville Street, they have really good beer. Should check them out sometime. So the first person I'm going to introduce today, Chris, you have my notes. The first person I'm going to introduce today is Bruce Van Allen, former council member, former mayor. Bruce is a lifelong community organizer who currently provides strategic advice and technical services to nonprofit organizations and election campaigns. He was the socialist feminist mayor of Santa Cruz in the early 1980s and currently serves as president of the Santa Cruz County Board of Education, to which he was just reelected unopposed. So give it up for Bruce.
Thank you, Faz, and thank you for doing what you're doing. You're doing a great job and it's great to have you here. Well, so I want to talk about keeping promises. Our country, the United States of America, our politics are kind of based on a set of promises that are usually kind of assumed that we kept them. And I want to suggest that we haven't in some really important ways. The inequality by income and wealth, the inequality by race, the inequality and exploitation and pressure by gender, and even the species dominance in terms of our relationship to the rest of the living things that make up this world that we actually could not live without. These inequalities are the breaking of the promise that our politics is supposed to be based on. And so what I want to challenge us to do today is we got to keep those promises and we got to work on it ourselves. And what would, just imagine, what would it be like if our country, our society, our city of Santa Cruz kept those promises? And so that people didn't need to worry about can I pay the rent? Or am I earning enough to buy food and pay rent and medicine and get my kids through school and live a comfortable life in retirement if that's what I choose? What would it be like if we felt that where our water comes from and our food and our, even our buildings, didn't do damage to the environment and other life forms just in the process of creating them and having them? What would it be like if our country actually lived up to its promises? Well, let's hold that vision, but we have some things working against us. And one of the things that I've learned over the years in politics is that things that are not good are usually kept not good because, not just because it's the past history, inequality didn't just happen in the past and now we're just trying to kind of fix it and clean it up. It's because there are forces, incredible powerful forces, that are keeping that inequality in place. I'm not talking about conspiracies. I'm talking about capitalism. I'm talking about the patriarchy that our society continues to reinforce. I'm talking about white supremacy, which is a basis of our economy and our society in the United States of America. These are things that actually continue to benefit people today and therefore they are fortunately keeping them in place. And we see this in the news all the time. So this is a hard thing. What could we imagine that we could do to keep those promises that we have all made to each other, that we have all assumed are already made? Well, I actually am encouraged by a couple of things. One is a bunch of you who are prepared to take some time out of your life to support a dynamic new candidate who is going to make a difference and believes in keeping those promises. And because I see as someone who works in politics every election, and so I'm always looking at who's voting or who's participating, who's showing up. And there's something happening, I want to say this to the people that are closer to my age, which is there's a generation that has accomplished something that progressives and the left of my age were actually not able to do. And that is that we can list the great anti-promise keepers, capitalism, patriarchy, white supremacy. And you know, a lot of us have a history of trying to figure out which one of those is the main one, you know, the bigger, the dominant thing that really shapes everything else. Well, there's a new generation that's come out of academia and young people who have watched the world as they grew up and watched us struggle and heard those promises. And they actually have a better way to think about it, which is that all those things, those oppressions, those inequalities that are maintained in place by those powerful interests intersect, layer upon each other. And that the experience in life of a person subjected to racial inequality is not the same as the experience of someone who is subject to economic inequality, but not that those are separate, but in fact that they intersect on each other. And so we have now a deeper metaphor and a deeper understanding of what we have to actually do on a practical basis to make our society better. And the deeper understanding of how those great forces both affect us and can be fought. And so what I want to say is today, let's work on keeping those promises that we have assumed are here, but actually I think are not here. And so I want to ask you today, promise me, promise each other, that you will get Justin Cummings elected and that you will stick with Santa Cruz until we fight to win. Thank you.
Our next speaker is our city council, our own city council member, Sandy. It's actually kind of funny, this is where your campaign lunch party was two years ago. She's a longtime community activist, educator, and was part of the brand new council, community effort in 2016 that I got her on the Santa Cruz City Council.
Yay!
Good afternoon, everyone. Really great to see you all here. And yeah, so I was going to start out, Faz just stole my thunder with the reminder that yeah, two years ago, about around now, I was standing here as a candidate for city council and many of you were here, many community labor activists, people who really consistently have been, have come out, who roll up their sleeves and do the hard work on campaigns, electoral campaigns, policy campaigns, to try to reflect the progressive social justice, environmental justice orientation, environmental sustainability that we all share. And so it's really good to see many of you here again and see a lot of new faces. And you know, I'm hoping that this is, in some, to some extent, a groundhog day, right? A good groundhog day where the next city council candidate standing up here before us is going to be on the city council and work with us. Yeah. And really feel honored to get to introduce Justin in just a moment. I also want to thank Sarah and Tarmo for opening their homes once again. They are, you just came because you got invited on a list. Get to know them, they are amazing, longtime community labor activists and good people. So thank you, Sarah and Tarmo. So, you know, I don't want to talk too much about all of the issues that we know are kind of plaguing our city, our community, you know, the housing crisis, the affordable housing crisis and all those things. But I'm going to say a couple of things about that and then just tell you why I support Justin, why I want to work with him on the city council and why I'm going to work alongside him for the next couple of months, few months, to make sure he gets elected along with Drew Glover to the city council. So I'm not going to expound on what the problems are, we all know. We also have an opportunity to shift the tide and, you know, and I think Bruce got at some of that. We are facing formidable challenges in our country globally and here in our town around development in particular and what's happening to the people who live and work here, regular working people. So as a council member, but we know there's more work to be done to shift the tide and I'll get there. As a council member, I've been gratified to work with so many of you. You really stick with it and, you know, come before us, work with us, alongside us, and keep us honest as council members. And I really appreciate that. I want this to be, continue to be an engaged community and that requires that we, you know, get to know our community, get to live here, have stability, all of those things that we think are important to us, part of our values. So we made a little progress, you know, we passed a temporary rent moratorium, renting program. We got a temporary safe place to sleep for unhoused people. We can laugh for it, albeit, you know, limited and temporary ones, so we have a lot more work to do there. And we have been able to negotiate some additional funding for community programs. Really not a lot of additional funding because it was just getting back to where we've been from proposed cuts. But there, you know, we, our presence on the council, I think, has made a big difference in those arenas and others.
That's why we're here.
But we need a solid progressive majority to go further. We need an activist council, activist council members, not status quo consent agenda council members. And I really believe that Justin Cummings will be one of those activist council members. So I first met Justin when a few of us met with him and talked about his own experiences, how they, you know, kind of activated him and motivated his work, the work he does, which he'll tell you about, and his commitment. So much of what he said resonated with me, you know, in my own experience and that of many others of us and the stories we hear, you know, talking about dinner parties, gatherings, where the conversation inevitably turns around, comes around through tallies of how many of our friends have received eviction notices, exorbitant rent increases, how many of our friends are moving away.
Too many.
Right? And that's, you know, in the face of really destabilizing wealthy investment, investors, market forces, we face formidable challenges. But, and, oh, I was going to say, for those of you who are Facebookers, you know, it just takes, you can just look at Justin's Facebook page and see pictures of him and he'll tell you about the work he does with, you know, with young, underserved kids, a diverse group of students who go out and he leads them in doing these amazing projects all over, environmental projects all over the state of California. He's really, truly brings together social and environmental justice in ways that we would be, you know, lucky to have that view on the council. So just a couple of things about why I'm supporting Justin. So he's a deep thinker and, you know, I've realized this just in the meetings that we've had over the past few months, almost half a year now, you know, he listens and he takes notes, he learns, and he's really, really ready to turn that passion into policy action. And so those will reflect his values, I'm very sure of that. And I'll leave it to him to speak about his goals for the city, but I'll just say I'm ecstatic about the idea of serving with him to enact the kinds of policies that will ensure that Santa Cruz really remains a place for all of us. In 2016, you all rallied and showed up and we won. Kind of a sort of one, right? But, you know, as we know, there's always more work to do. Help us get Justin elected and I'm sure he will roll up his sleeves and get to work with all of us.
All right. Our last speaker before Justin comes up is Costanza. Costanza is a long-term resident of Santa Cruz and has been a friend of Justin Cummings during that time. She graduated with a PhD in environmental studies and is currently a professor at San Jose State University and is also working on her campaign and she's awesome, so.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to tell you a little bit about how I know Justin and why I wholeheartedly support him for city council. So I first moved to Santa Cruz in...
Step in front of the microphone.
I first moved to Santa Cruz in 2009 to pursue my PhD in environmental studies, as Faz said. And that's when I met Justin, who was also in the process of pursuing his PhD. And the thing that struck me about him right away is his capacity to balance his commitment to his travels and research in Panama and also his other commitments and more personal commitments such as competing in jujitsu tournaments, for example. More recently, I've had the chance to also work with him and watch him in his new role as the director of the Doris Duke Conservation Scholars Program and really see firsthand the really important work he's doing to help increase diversity in the field of environmental conservation. So really what I've seen in the last nine years is Justin's capacity to wear so many different hats and really succeed at all of this, which is why I was so excited when he told me that he was going to be running for city council. And I'm especially excited because I can already see that Justin is committed to prioritizing issues that are really dear to me and I think are really important to all of us in this community. And one of these issues is the housing crisis. I firsthand really experienced the moose of the lack of affordable housing in Santa Cruz. When I first arrived in 2009, I was paying $875 for a room in the Upper West Side. By the time I moved out of that same house and room, I was paying $1,200 for it. And this was a year ago. So, and after eight years, the landlord called me and just asked me if I could move out so he could get a fresh batch of undergrad in the house. So you can see how heartbreaking it is to have this experience over and over in Santa Cruz and yet try to maintain roots within this community. So I'm really excited, I've seen Justin's commitment to affordable housing and really tackling the housing crisis. And I think it's so important that we elect people on the city council that will prioritize issues such as affordable housing and sustainable development. So that's why I hope that you'll all join me in supporting Justin for city council. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to my dear friend, colleague, and social justice advocate, Justin Cummings.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming today. Thank you to Sarah and Tarmo for offering up your backyard for us to use for this event. And I want to thank all the people who have helped us plan and get to this point. Today, I wanted to come to you all first to introduce myself and to let you all know who I am. Many people haven't really recognized my name, they haven't heard of who I am. And so I'd just like to start by giving you all a little bit of my background. So I grew up on the south side of Chicago. My mom was a nutritionist who worked in low-income neighborhoods to educate families on how they could use and maximize their food stamps so they can make nutritional meals for their families on low incomes. And my father was a lawyer. He worked on Harold Washington's administration when Harold Washington was mayor. Later, he became a civil rights, or I'm sorry, he became a civil defense, criminal defense attorney. And worked in the civil rights movement when he was young. And so both of my parents instilled within me this sense of you have to work for your community, you should give back to your community, and you should always look out for people who are less fortunate than yourself. So in addition to these values that my parents instilled me with, I spent a lot of time going to summer camps and spending a lot of time out in nature. And during the 90s, there were a number of different shows like Captain Planet, the Reducer Use Recycle got really popular. And I wanted to be a planeteer and, you know, do my part. And so when I got to college, I was able to take a biology class and one of my professors was like, you know, you can be a biologist and you can do this. And that was the first person who ever reached out to me to make me feel like this was something that I could do. And so I'd always dreamed of helping to save the rainforest and in college decided I'm going to become a biologist, I'm going to become fluent in Spanish, and I'm going to go help save the rainforest. So once I made that decision, I felt like, well, I need to get involved in other things while I'm in college as well. And so I got really into student activism. And for one of the groups, which was the Fair Trade Coalition, we, I was the co-chair of that group, and during my time with them, we actually got our campus to go 90% fair trade within about a year and a half, so. In addition to that, I helped organize Iraq war protests. I also helped organize Hurricane Katrina relief group where we went down during our Thanksgiving break and we did relief work for Katrina. And eventually was able to become student dean of the College of Sciences. So I was very committed to issues that dealt with the environment that affected people in positive ways and felt like it was not only, I felt like it was my duty to do that as someone who cared and wanted to see ourselves have a better world, even as just a college student. In 2007, well, I graduated from college with a degree in biology and Spanish, and then in 2007, I was able to come here and pursue a PhD in ecology and evolutionary biology in the lab of Ingrid Parker, who is sitting with us today. And that work allowed me to follow this dream of going to help try to save tropical rainforest, where I did my PhD work on forest restoration in Panama. I graduated with a PhD in 2013. I did some work on climate change in Miami from 2013 to 2015. And when I came back to Santa Cruz, I was able to become director and help co-create the Doris Duke Conservation Scholars Program, which helps to get students from underrepresented backgrounds into the field of natural conservation. And not only that, but to create leaders, future leaders of the conservation movement. So when I moved back in 2015, one of the things that really struck me the most was how expensive things were getting and I started hearing more stories about how much people were getting displaced. I thought it was expensive moving here in 2007 when it was $600 for a room and that was about the standard. And when I came back and heard and learned that $900 to $1,000 was about the standard for what you're going to pay to rent a room in Santa Cruz, I just couldn't understand how working-class people and how families and how people who aren't very well off could actually rent and live in Santa Cruz. And so over the past couple of years, I've had at least 20 friends, for example, last summer, who were asked to move out of their houses, Costanza being one of them. And there's a number of people who are sitting in this audience today who have also been asked to move out of their houses. And I got fed up with just sitting by and watching my friends move out and having conversations about them not having anywhere to go or not being able to afford. And so just to move a little bit into how I became more active in local activism here, I started going to city council meetings and I wanted to figure out who I could work with to start making some changes in Santa Cruz. And the Movement for Housing Justice was that group. I gave them my email, they contacted me, and I started going to their meetings and realized, here's a group of passionate people living in Santa Cruz who want to come together and make a difference. And at the time, and at that time, the city council was doing research on the housing problem and how they could fix it. But they weren't doing anything to actually create any policy that was going to help renters in Santa Cruz. And so I worked with the folks in the Movement for Housing Justice and we were able to get realized that she did fall under and qualify for the moratorium, and the landlords were only able to raise the rent by 2%. So, you know, this has been having positive effects on people within our community. Moving along, as I worked on the rent control campaign, a number of people started coming up to me and saying, have you ever considered running for city council? And I thought, I've always wanted to get involved in politics, and I've always been wanting to get especially involved in local politics. And after having discussions with many of my friends and family and people who said, you know, you'd be good at this, you should do this, you're crazy, but you should do this, I decided that, all right, let's do it. And here I am today. And so just to let you all know, a few of the things that I'm really passionate about in Santa Cruz, in addition to rent control, I think that the story I just told gives you a good sense of how committed I am to that issue. But Santa Cruz needs to have a city council that's going to look out for the interest of the people and not out for profits for big corporations. There's a new development that went in at 555 Pacific. I think many of you are familiar with that. Just to give you a sense of what that development looks like, studio in that building is $2,250 a month for a studio. City is proposing to build 600 more units, 500 of which are going to be market rate and luxury housing, and 100 of which are going to be affordable. So, and exactly, what's affordable, right? I mean, I hope it's not $2,250 for a studio, because that's not, that's not. So we need to have a city council that's going to look towards solutions to our housing crisis issue. Bringing in more luxury homes is not going to fix the problem, it's going to make it worse, because the people who don't have houses are going to be without houses still, and more people are going to come and take up the small amount of real estate and space that we have to develop in Santa Cruz. And if I get elected to city council, I'm going to work with the other members of city council to make sure that we have effective solutions that are environmentally sustainable and that are also going to address the problems that we currently have right now. And I mentioned that one of those is going to be rent control. I'm going to stand behind that because it's going to take time for this housing to get built. And in the meantime, we need to protect the families, we need to protect the service workers, and we need to protect the socio-economically vulnerable people in our community from being further displaced and gentrified out of the Santa Cruz community. Much of these protections are also going to help when it comes to traffic. We need to have people who work in Santa Cruz live in Santa Cruz. We don't need to have them coming in from outside of, having to force people who are from here outside the community to only see them increase the amount of traffic that we have in our community just so that they can go to work. Additionally, for the people who already have to commute in, we need to find solutions for them to be able to take public transportation and offset the cost of them having to use that public transportation to get into Santa Cruz. Not lastly, I'm going to keep going. Part of this issue with housing as well is the fact that some people don't have anywhere to go when they get displaced. I have about half a dozen working homeless friends in Santa Cruz, and currently, there have been policies that try to push these people off the street, that ban them from sleeping in their cars and ban them from being on the streets of Santa Cruz after the sun goes down. And it's not acceptable when these are people who are paying taxes, who are going to work, and have nowhere else to go. Additionally, we need to provide services for the people who also might be suffering from mental illness or from drug addiction who are on our streets in Santa Cruz, because we need to incorporate these people so they can become, they can get back on their feet and we can get them back into the workforce. But they're part of this community. And I'm going to, this is the last point I want to bring up, because I feel like I can be up here all day talking about all the issues of Santa Cruz. But Santa Cruz is a very special place for all of us. We've all come here and stayed here for a variety of reasons, and one of those reasons is the natural environment that is Santa Cruz. And we need to continue to protect these open spaces. If we are developing frivolously and we're not taking into account the impacts that this development is going to have on our environment, it's going to be very costly for us in the future, especially as we see climate change reduce the amount of precipitation that we have in the area and reduce the amount of water that we have available for the people within our area. And so we need to make conscious, sound decisions when it comes to development and how that's going to impact the environment of Santa Cruz. So we have an opportunity right now, we have an opportunity to change the face of the city council of Santa Cruz. We have an opportunity to create a progressive city council of Santa Cruz. That's going to require a number of things. Myself and Drew are going to need to get elected to lead the campaign. But effective solutions to our community. And this is a campaign for the people. I am going to be working and listening to all of you to try to make sure that we're making decisions that are best for all of us who make up the core foundation of Santa Cruz. And if what I've said today resonates with you, if we share similar values, if you want to help protect working families, teachers, educators, students, a future for the children of our community, then I ask for your support. And there are cards up there to sign up and if you want to volunteer at any point in time. And we're also taking donations because it's going to take getting the word out to as many people as possible for us to be effective and make this change happen. So I want to thank you all for coming out today. Yeah, I took some questions, too.
Is there a mailing list? Do you have information for future campaign events?
You can get on our email list, and we will be sending out more info about future events, yes. So if you go see the folks at the table, you can get on our mailing list.
What's your view or your opinion on rail trail?
No, I'll answer. I have, I think that the trail is great, and I know that the rail is going to bring, has the potential to bring a lot of jobs to Santa Cruz. I do have a bit of concerns, and I want to talk to more people about the rail, because one of the issues that I've had and that a red flag that's popped up for me is I've heard people say over time, you know, if we can, it doesn't really matter if the workers, the service industry workers live in Santa Cruz, we can just bust them in from other places like Watsonville and Salinas. So, you know, who cares if they can't afford to live here? And I'm worried that if we put in some form of rail, are people going to use that as an excuse to further gentrify Santa Cruz? And so I would like to have conversations with folks to learn more, and, but I, like, the one thing that I want to do in this position is listen and learn and take people's concerns into account. So that's one concern I have, but I'm more than happy to speak with other people and hear what they have to say.
You mentioned reforesting Panama. Can I hear you? You mentioned reforesting Panama, but how would you reforest?
Repeat the question.
Great question. So the question was, I did a lot of work on reforesting Panama, and how would I work to reforest Santa Cruz? That's a great question. I haven't put a lot of thought into that, to be honest, but at the same time, I do feel like it would be good to promote programs that have people plant more trees in their yards for starters and take some areas that have been deforested and try to reforest them. One big draw on energy resources is what's called heat island effect. So when we don't, when there's cities that are mostly pavement and they lack trees, they actually are a lot hotter, because the asphalt absorbs a lot of the heat, and that reradiates and it creates higher temperatures for the town in general, which means more establishments are going to be using AC and using more electricity. And so by creating more canopy cover, we can actually reduce the amount of heat in the city and thereby reduce what we're spending on energy costs associated with cooling.
How does that reflect with the parking garage downtown?
Well, for the...
A lot of concrete.
That is a lot of concrete, and I'm actually not for the parking garage downtown. So, that's how that works, parking garage. I am not for the parking garage. I think that, just kind of touching on that, I'll say that this year...
Touch it, hit it.
What's that?
I said, don't touch it, hit it.
I'll hit it. This year, I was actually really, I was a little skeptical about the jump bikes when they first got put in, but then, for me, once I used them, I realized how good of an asset it is now to the city. I've had my bike stolen twice. I have a really nice bike, and I rarely ride it because I don't want it to get stolen. It's kind of an oxymoron, but I just, it's one of those things that's happened to me now to where I don't want to risk my bike getting stolen. But to be able to use one of these jump bikes to get around town, it's a lot more affordable, they're not in jeopardy of getting stolen. And I think that that's one positive thing the city has done to try to get people out of cars and get people onto bikes. So why do we need more parking garages, you know? I mean, why should we be incentivizing people to drive in this town when we're trying to get them out of cars? Yeah, so, okay, I got one more question.
Hi. I'm wondering, you mentioned a lot of social action ideas that I support, including mental health issues and homelessness issues. And I suspect you'll get a lot of opposition about how you're going to afford all that and how you're just going to want to be a spending type candidate. What type of concepts are you thinking about to counter that in terms of the financial portion of that? I mean, I don't, I don't have any specific ideas and stuff, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think one thing is, for example, when it comes to housing, in lieu fees that have been collected over the past 40 years to try to help use that toward subsidizing and building more affordable housing. I also think that, you know, we have the cannabis tax that's coming through, and it's not clear how those funds are going to be allocated, but I think that one good place to put those would be towards drug rehabilitation and towards alleviating homelessness through mental health programs. So those are just two examples that I think would be good, yeah. Last one. Well, I said that was the last one, so I guess I'm going to leave one.
Does the city have any kind of affordable housing fund dedicated to affordable housing? I'm asking even, I guess, a yes or no question.
My understanding is that the in lieu fees that have been collected for a long time are supposed to go towards that, and I'm not actually clear about what's happening with those these days. And I think that as a city council member, one of the things that I would do is want to be transparent with that type of information. So how are these funds getting collected, being spent, and are they being spent on the things that they're intended for? I'm going to just give my last question, and I want to thank you all again for coming out and looking forward to, yeah, and don't forget to vote for me, Andrew.
Before you leave, Nora's going to speak. One of the things that Justin mentioned is fundraising. Nora is really great at helping us raise funds. So our opposition is going to have a lot of money, right? But we have people power, right? So whatever we can give, anyways, Nora will do the rest, so.
Good pitch. So the last time I was here, we raised about almost $3,000. I was standing right here raising money for Sandy Brown. It was a good investment, right? We're going to do that again for her in a couple of years, right, Sandy? And to get her there, we have to have a four-vote majority. Must have a four-vote majority, because it's really time to have a four-vote majority. The last time we had an actual four-vote majority, without even defining the word progressive, let me just say, it's great to see former council member Tim Fitzmore is here. I'm not seeing him right now. There he is. There are a lot of formers that have come and gone, and some of them left after there was a four-vote majority. So now it's 2018, and it's time for a four-vote majority. So not kidding. The shit that we have to do cannot be done with a two-vote progressive seats. It has to be done with a four-vote majority. So let me say first of all, in the crowd today, thank you to Kristen Peterson, council member from Capitola, who has shown up to stand up for her friend. Thank you, Kristen. Sandra Nichols is here from the People's Democratic Club as well. If you know Jeffrey Smedberg, my brother from SEIU Local 521 and from the Labor Council. Ron Taylor is here from the Central Labor Council as well. So we are about the four-vote majority. Some of you bought some of those seats on your way in the door, and now it's time for the rest of you to buy the remainder of those seats right here, right now. So how many of you put money in the box when you came in at the door? Hands up. Right about half of you. That means the other half of you did not. That means the other half of you must right now. So how many of you have the guts to say you're going to give $100 right now? Okay, so Foz is happy to take that $100. Give it if you have it. There will be lesser amounts if you don't.
What about higher amounts?
Yes, please.
Taking $500 to $1,000. The sister in the black and the white is giving in a really serious way. We're not sure how much. Do you want to tell us how much?
500.
Some people are saying there's a limit. I come from a political family that says there are no limits. Give what you think you can get away with. There's nobody here that's going to report you, for God's sake. Especially if it's cash. I mean, come on. We all do it. What's that, Denise? Okay, no cash over $100. Figure that out. It's not hard to figure out. Foz will keep you honest. Give as much as you can. So if you can't give cash over $99, then figure out another way to give it. And you can talk to me later about how you want to give it, or you can talk to Foz right away. So how many people want to give 350, which is actually the maximum allowable? Whatever. Okay, so now we got a couple of 350s. That means we just raised $700 in 10 seconds of me talking, so I'm going to keep talking. How many people can give $200?
I'll give 250.
Okay, so hands are going up for 20250 to former council member Fitzmore, who I just called, Tim, the red hat. Chris keeps raising his hand, so he's into this campaign now for about, I don't know, $5,000. It's going up. I thought, and Michael Gesser has his hand raised as well. Are we down to 200? I mean, for $200, I'll, anyway, $200. How many people would like to give $200? $100. Now the hands go up a little bit more. Thank you, Kieran. Thank you, Stacy. These are rent control activists that are giving money that really they don't have, but they're going to give it anyway, because it's pretty critical that we have, oh, did I mention, a four-vote majority? That's how this is going to happen. So all the rest of y'all at $100. How many of you are at 100 now? Oh, look at that. That's like 500 right there. Foz, you're still seeing the people that are raising their hands for 100, right? So for those of you... So, for those of you who don't know Foz, he's the guy taking your money right now. So, if he doesn't get to you, you gotta get to him to give. People that wanna give under $50 can either give it directly to me or to Foz. Either way, make sure we get your money. So, let me finish by saying this. Doing the pitch, which I'll probably end up doing tomorrow also at a campaign event, thank you so much. I just got paid. You know, when you do this pitch, people gotta give, right? And it makes it seem like money and political activism go together. So, here's the thing. Money and political activism go together. They just do. We can't run a rent control campaign without money and we cannot put Justin Cummings in office without it. So, keep giving, you'll have more opportunities over the next couple of months. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
Before you get up to, I'm Mr. Chris Crowe, I'm on the Santa Cruz City Council. I just wanted to give a shout out and introduce Justin's mentor, Ingrid Parker. Ingrid Parker fell in love with Santa Cruz when she came here as a student in 1986 and she has lived here permanently since 1997 as a professor of plant ecology. And now, she's the chair of UCSC's Department of Ecology and Evolutionary Biology. This guy brings out the big people, I'll tell you. Her mission in life is to promote the conservation of biodiversity and the restoration of the earth's wild spaces. Ingrid loves our community and she's a parent of a junior at Santa Cruz High School and an active member of the Peace United Church. She had volunteered with Pahrillo Valley School District and the Santa Cruz County Science Fair on issues of science education. Give it up for Ingrid Parker.
Justin, I've never given a political speech before, and Justin, this is how much you inspire me. Justin Cummings is a man who is born for leadership. Several years ago, I actually had the honor to meet Justin's mom in Chicago. Justin's mom is an incredibly powerful woman. She is a strong woman, a smart woman, a woman of incredible integrity. And you can see the power and light from her that shines through Justin. And I know she must be incredibly proud of you right now. So, even as a kid, Justin, just to tell you a little bit about his background, he had a special spark. And for those of us, those of you who know Justin personally, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Even then, Justin had a very special spark that adults around him could see. And he was actually picked out of the crowd of his peers to participate in a special program that was designed to groom young people to become leaders of their community. This promise, this spark, this call to leadership is something that Justin has lived into his whole life, but just in many different ways, I think in many different ways from ways that your original mentors could have even imagined. I have the privilege of claiming that I am the person who first drew Justin Cummings to Santa Cruz. He came to us as a young doctoral student in 2007, having already had quite a lot of experience in ecological research and conservation, from everything from the tropical rainforests he mentioned to being on fishing boats in Alaska. And as my PhD student, Justin taught me at least as much as I taught him. I believe that Justin Cummings is the most open person I have ever met. He combines this incredible confidence with a constant striving to understand, to improve, to succeed, and to contribute. His analytical abilities make him an excellent scientist, but he is so much more than just a scientist. Justin is an exceptional listener. I watched him sit out on the stoop on the cement block in Panama, talking to the neighbors. And I've also watched him giving seminar at international scientific meetings. And he is incredibly comfortable in both of those types of conversations. He is so competent, he is so compelling, he's so smart, and I think he's got so much to share. I am so surprised, so proud, and not surprised at all, that Justin Cummings has decided to use his great capacity for leadership to participate in the public life of Santa Cruz. And we are so lucky to have Justin Cummings in our community and I know he will make an outstanding contribution to the Santa Cruz City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, so much for coming today. On your way out, feel free to take up a yard sign. We have a bunch of yard signs. You are now legally allowed to put them out and grab some food, wine, beer, whatever. Thank you so much for coming. Just a quick shout out, tomorrow is the rent control kickoff. None of you have heard about it? Four to 6 p.m. tomorrow?
What is it?
It's a weekend of parties. The rent control kickoff for rent control. It's four to 6 p.m. tomorrow at 215 Garki Street. That's four to six tomorrow, 215 Garki Street. Thank you so much. Have a great day.